To you the Spring 2024 statewide assessment results. Thank you. The state assessments reported today will be the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment, known as the NJSLA, and the Dynamic Learning Maps, called the DLM. The district reporting will be broken down by performance levels, student participation, assessment results, and we end it with intervention strategies. The NJSLA uses five performance levels that delineate the knowledge, skills, and practices students are able to demonstrate. Here you see the five levels, with level four and five being proficiency. New Brunswick Public Schools' number of students tested with valid scores in English Language Arts is 4,320 students. When comparing Spring 2024 NJSLA English Language Arts District Performance Percentages with State Performance Percentages, grades three, six, and nine have the greatest percentage of students not meeting or partially meeting expectations in ELA. Fifty-eight percent in grade three, fifty-one point four percent in grade six, and fifty point eight percent in grade nine, with a high discrepancy when compared to the state of New Jersey percentages. Grades five and eight, however, had the greatest percentage of students meeting expectations in ELA, with twenty-eight percent in grade five and thirty-two point two percent in grade eight. New Brunswick Public Schools' number of students tested with valid scores in mathematics is 4,601 students. There are very few students who tested in Algebra II, as NJSLA Mathematics is only administered to students in grades three to nine. When comparing Spring 2024 NJSLA Mathematics District Performance Percentages with State Performance Percentages, grades six and eight had the greatest percentage of students not meeting or partially meeting expectations in math, with seventy-five point nine percent in grade six and seventy-six point two percent in grade eight. However, grades three and four had the greatest percentage of students meeting expectations in mathematics, with sixteen point two percent in grade three and fifteen point six percent in grade four. In English Language Arts, ability diverse and multilingual learners had a larger percentage of students not yet meeting expectations in comparison to the other subgroups. The Hispanic or Latino and economically disadvantaged subgroups performed similarly to the overall district population of students with valid scores. In mathematics, ability diverse and multilingual learners had a larger percentage of students not yet meeting expectations in comparison to the other subgroups. The Hispanic or Latino, Black or African American, and economically disadvantaged subgroups performed similarly to the overall district population of students with valid scores. Students performing at a level three and four are considered proficient and above in the NJSLA Science Assessment. Here you see the four levels. They demonstrate appropriate or exemplary understanding of DCIs, which are disciplinary core ideas, and SEPs, which is the science engineering practices, if they score three or a four on this assessment. Students performing at a level one and a level two or level two are considered to be below the state minimum level of proficiency. New Brunswick Public Schools' number of students tested with valid scores in Science is 1,857 students. As you can see here, the three grade levels that are assessed in Science with the NJSLA is our grades five, eight, and eleven. When comparing Spring 2024 NJSLA Science District Performance Percentages with State Performance Percentages, students in grade eleven have the greatest percentage, with eleven point three proficiency in Science and nearly twenty-five percent demonstrating near proficiency. In Science, ability diverse and multilingual learners had a larger percentage of students with minimum understanding. The Hispanic or Latino, Black or African American, and economically disadvantaged subgroups performed similarly to the overall district population of students with valid scores. Here we see a two-year comparison of the district performance in ELA and Mathematics. In English Language Arts, we saw a decrease in grade seven and an increase in all other grade levels or courses. In Mathematics, we saw an increase in all grade levels and courses. The two-year comparison of district performance in Science, students in grades five and eight showed some growth between the 2023 and 2024 NJSLA administrations. Now we transition into the second assessment, which is the DLM, Dynamic Learning Maps. Students who participate in the DLM have significant cognitive disabilities and do not participate in the NJSLA. This assessment uses four performance levels that delineate the knowledge, skills, and practices represented by the essential elements that students are able to demonstrate. To be considered proficient, a student would need to score a level three or four. In English Language Arts, and in Math, a total of fifty-four students were assessed, and in Science, a total of nineteen students were assessed. When reporting percentages of students at each performance level, because the number of students tested at each grade level, with the exception of grade three and grade four, was less than ten students, we suppressed the data to protect student confidentiality for all three content areas. Therefore, the data in ELA and Mathematics was suppressed and reported in two groups, elementary and secondary. Science as one group with the three grade levels assessed. Across all content areas, assessed at all grade levels, the greatest percentage of students were emerging in ELA grades three to five with fifty-two percent, ELA grades six to eight and eleven, Mathematics grades three to five, and Science grades three to five had the greatest percentage of students at target. The students who participated in the Spring 2024 DLM and were also economically disadvantaged had a lower percentage of students who were emerging for Science, grades five, eight, and eleven with eight percent, and a higher percentage of students at target with sixty-two percent when compared to the overall population administered with the DLM. The Hispanic or Latino subgroup performed similarly to the overall district population of students who were administered the DLM. And now I'll share the intervention strategies that we're implementing this year to address the data shared with you tonight. We are currently providing ELA and Mathematics test prep with a purpose, extended day learning opportunities for students. We are also going to begin, we just borderproofed, we will be borderproofing tonight, the application for a grant to provide high-impact small-group virtual evening tutoring in ELA and Mathematics for identified students in grades three and four. We also have aligned the focus of content between the district common assessments and the NJSLA evidence statements analysis to monitor student performance on standards to determine the focus of instructional support in the curriculum. We also have our waiting period to provide targeted intervention and enrichment opportunities to strengthen content knowledge required on the state assessment. And then lastly, we are engaging identified students in Tier Three Mathematics Support as well as Tier Two and Three foundational reading skills with our basic skills interventions. What you see noted here is all the programs we have discussed during our intervention strategies. We have an area of focus, which all of the curricula and programs are addressing these standards. So in grades three to five Mathematics, you'll see that our focus is fractions, numbers and b, and numbers in base ten. In grades six to eight, you'll see that there's some statistics, as well as expressions and equations, and the number system. At the high school, the focus for Mathematics will be on congruence and arithmetic with polynomials and rational expressions. In ELA grades three to five, a focus will be not only on reading literature, but also language vocabulary acquisition and use and literal meanings. In grades six to nine, there will be a focus on reading science and technical subjects as well as informational texts that we also see embedded into our Science and Social Studies curriculum. And in Science, we're going to be focusing on physical sciences, one of the sciences, as well as investigating practices as one of the science engineering practices that we'll be working on with our intervention strategies. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sill. Can I get a motion on the minutes of the September seventeen, twenty twenty-four meeting?
Second.
Oh, roll call, Madam Secretary.
Ms. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood?
Yes.
Mrs. Solis?
Yes.
Mr. Spencer?
Yes.
Ms. Morella?
Yes.
Mr. Adorno?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Uh, move on to item five, Superintendent's Report, Dr. Johnson.
Thank you. Good evening. As of October twenty twenty-four, we enrolled eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-five students. There were two cases of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. There were thirty-four suspensions. Our staff attendance was at ninety-six percent, and our student attendance at ninety-three percent. For October, we're very excited to announce that for the next couple of days, the next three days, parent-teacher conferences will be on October sixteenth, seventeenth, and eighteenth for our pre-K to eighth grades, and for high school students on October twenty-fourth. I want to note also that it'll be early dismissal on these dates. These conferences provide a valuable opportunity for parents and teachers to have conversations, to discuss their child's progress, their growth, their challenges, and we encourage a very open dialogue where parents can share insight and seek questions. This is a great chance for us to collaborate in supporting our students and our children's education and success. This month in October, we continue to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month and also Principals Month, honoring cultural contributions and leadership within our district. On Custodians' Day, which is October second, we thank our custodial staff, and we recognize World Teachers' Day on October fifth, and National Coaches' Day on October sixth for the impactful roles of teachers and coaches. During breast cancer awareness month, we stand together supporting and support prevention efforts. We also observe World Mental Health Day on October tenth, and National Stop Bullying Day on October eleventh to promote wellness and kindness. Earlier today, we were honored to participate in the Paul Rosen Statue installation at Feester Park, celebrating a remarkable figure whose legacy of courage and activism continued to inspire us. Paul Rosen, an African-American singer, actor, scholar, and civil rights activist, is widely is widely recognized for his contributions to the arts and his advocacy for social justice. His unwavering commitment to equality and the fight against racism serves as a powerful reminder of the importance of standing up for justice everywhere. Our New Brunswick High School marching band had an amazing experience at Rutgers Band Day this past Saturday, performing alongside the Rutgers University marching band and proudly representing our district. The event showcased their hard work and dedication, and we're grateful to Rutgers University and the community for their support in making it a memorable success. One of our dedicated teachers, excuse me, at Paul Rosen Community School for the Arts, and an alumna of New Brunswick Public Schools, Jessica Peayiz Merino, was recently honored by Rutgers University's athletics as part of the College Football Playoff Foundation's extra yard for teacher programming. This initiative, which partners with institutions institutions to support pre-K-12 education, awarded one thousand dollars, Donors Choose gift cards, to each Big Ten school, which funds directly to a community school. Paul Rosen was selected, and Jessica Peayiz Merino, whose class achieved sixty percent proficiency at or above, at proficiency or above proficiency, advanced proficiency on the state assessment, received a well-deserved recognition along with an additional one thousand dollars. This honor celebrates her dedication to student success. Two of our recent graduates of New Brunswick Health Science Technology High School, Mary Anne Bravo Martinez and Genesis Martinez, recently completed the prestigious American Chemical Society Seed Symposium at Seton Hall University. We are extremely proud of their continued success and accomplishments, as they represent our district with excellence in their postgraduate endeavors. And lastly, we're excited to announce that our Wellness Clinic will take place this Saturday, October nineteenth, offering COVID-nineteen and flu vaccines to help protect our school community as we approach the upcoming season. Along with these vaccinations, we will also provide health resources to students, to families, and staff, and we encourage everyone to take advantage of this opportunity to prioritize their health and well-being. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Item number one, Ms. Caldwell?
Second.
Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Ms. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood?
Yes.
Mrs. Solis?
Yes.
Mr. Spencer?
Yes.
Ms. Morella?
Yes.
Mr. Adorno?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Item six, Student Representative Report, Emily Cruz Menih.
Good evening. My name is Emily Cruz, and I will be presenting the Student Representative Report. Spirit Week and Homecoming will be next week. Students and their advisors are preparing for Spirit Week and decorating their grounds in the high school. Boys' football will have their senior night October twenty-fifth during their homecoming meeting. Cross-country, boys' and girls' soccer had their senior nights the previous week, and girls' volleyball is this Thursday, October seventeenth. Sign-ups are now open for the high school and middle school, all winter sports including basketball, wrestling, cheerleading, indoor track, bowling, and esports. NJGPA Fall Testing took place for seniors this past week. This is one of the graduation pathway opportunities for seniors, and both and both ELA and math sessions were well attended. Finally, on October first, the Student Council Executive Board recorded a video with Mr. Russ Knackberg regarding the sustainability competition that New Brunswick High School had entered. Results will be announced by the end of the month. This includes the Student Representative Report.
Thank you. Item seven, Facilities Committee Report, Mrs. Jaceni Hernández.
The Facilities Committee was held. The Facilities Committee meeting was held on October fourteenth at five P.M. The district-wide LED signage project is almost complete. Two more LED signs are being installed this week, with final signs scheduled for next week. The balance of the electrical connections and some miscellaneous work should be completed before the end of the month. The security camera upgrades project at the high school, middle school, and Lord Sterling has been completed. A total of three hundred and thirty-three cameras have been installed. The HVAC upgrades at McKinley Community School have been completed. All the unit ventilators surrounding the second-floor classrooms have been replaced. Additionally, the installation of the new HVAC equipment surrounding the gym and kitchen have been completed. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Athletic Committee reported by Ms. Caldwell.
Good evening. Good evening. The fall season is coming up into championship season. Our teams are beginning their respective county tournaments, and in the beginning of November, they will enter their state tournaments. The boys' soccer team has won both of their county pool play games and are taking on Woodbridge High School as we speak. The girls' soccer, since the twenty fifteen season, where the team went thirteen and four, currently the girls are seven, six, and two, as they take on South Plainfield in the first round of the GMCs on Wednesday. Cross-country will have their divisional championship on Wednesday, and then the county champion championship at Thompson Park in Monroe on October twenty-sixth. Girls' volleyball, boys' and girls' soccer, cross-country, and esports will all qualify for their respective state tournaments starting with the first week in November. Middle school boys' soccer remains undefeated, and the middle school football team looks to qualify to the playoffs next week if they earn a win over East Brunswick on Thursday. Thank you.
Can we get a motion to accept the September Athlete Report?
Second.
Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Ms. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood?
Yes.
Mrs. Solis?
Yes.
Mr. Spencer?
Yes.
Ms. Morella?
Yes.
Mr. Adorno?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Curriculum Policy Report, Mrs. Darren Solis.
Thank you, Mr. Adorno. The Curriculum Policy Committee met last week. It was a very thorough meeting by Ms. LaWes Hill. The presentation that we had, it was in addition to the Spring 2024 statewide assessment results presentation that was shared, we also engaged in a couple of curriculum and instruction discussions, CNI discussions, including CNI expectations of content area specialists. Mrs. Hill met with all content area specialists, as you all know, the administrators here, you know, in ELA, Mathematics, and Science, to set expectations for the school year based on their roles and responsibilities, as well as district and school instructional goals. Content-focused coaching cycle framework was covered. Directors and supervisors were reintroduced to the content-focused coaching cycle to develop a deeper understanding of the techniques, tools, and strategies focused on the instructional core of planning, implementing, and debriefing of lessons. The board is really excited about this. Using content coaching as a strategy to improve student learning and achievement, as well as impact teaching practice system-wide, to yield effective planning and reflective conversations grounded on feedback that is collaborative, evidence-based, supportive, and actionable. CNI updates include Perry University that was held on September twelfth with Welcome Back to the School, the CNI newsletter. Newsletters that went out were MBPS remembering nine eleven, Hispanic Heritage Month, Breast Cancer Awareness Month, bilingual child month. We covered resolutions. All of the resolutions were reviewed and recommended for approval and in tonight's consent agenda. Policies and regulations we covered include PE two-two-zero-zero curriculum content, which is mandated and has been revised to remove a list of referencing numerous New Jersey student learning standards. This list did not include all the standards, and since NJSS standards are continually changing, it is appropriate to remove reference to specific NJSLS standards. We also covered PE five-three-five-zero, student suicide prevention, which was also mandated. The statute requirements were recently revised to include training requirements for additional staff members, a requirement for any staff to be trained to warn and protect when they have information that a student intends to harm themselves, and a requirement to notify all staff who are required to be trained in accordance with the district's reporting on suicide prevention, awareness, and response protocols. And lastly, we covered policy R five-three-five-zero, student suicide prevention, also mandated, and it was reviewed and revised by the Student Support Services Department. The primary change was with the term child study team being replaced with the trained school mental health staff member. That, Mr. Adorno, concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Solis. Students Support Service Committee report.
The Week of Respect designated by the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act is a vital opportunity for school districts to emphasize the importance of social and emotional learning and the prevention of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. From October seventh through the eleventh, twenty twenty-four, MBPS encourages educators and students alike to engage in age-appropriate discussions and activities and promote kindness, empathy, and inclusivity. Serving the Week of Respect underscores our commitment to ensuring that students feel safe, valued, respected, and respected within their school community.
Item number eleven, Educational Service Commission of New Jersey, Dr. Johnson.
Yes, thank you. Attending my first meeting, and just trying to get to lay the land and understand the committees and how they work, I happen to sit on the curriculum committee, personnel committee, as well as the executive committee. At this point, there is a real relationship within the committees, and we're trying to understand how we're going to be operating within the Educational Service Commissions, but I could tell you that, you know, we did some personnel actions. In terms of curriculum, we spoke a lot about the ELA and the math rollout, so we are rolling out the ELA new updated curriculum from the DOE, however, math will not occur until the following year. And what we're looking for right now is to determine the type of program is needed for the teachers of that population to ensure they have all the tools and resources needed.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Item number twelve, Public Comments. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up to speak tonight?
Yes, we do. First on our list, we have Mr. Charlie Cradaville.
Thank you, Mr. Cradaville. State your name, your address, you've got three minutes.
Good evening, board members. Charlie Cradaville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. I'll start by saying it's great to see some of you at the statue unveiling today, and it's a great day for New Brunswick, whenever we can honor such an inspirational figure. I do want to ask about the final resolution on your agenda, and if you want to use it to make a point, see you're spending eleven thousand dollars on video recording for the high school teams. Sounds like a good use of video technology. In all seriousness, have you given any thought, would you consider using video recording technology to make recordings of these meetings and share them with the public, broadcast in line, like so many other reports of education do?
Want to have a take into consideration?
Okay, I think, and I would encourage you to look at other talent and see what they do, and I think, you know, you probably accomplish this for less than the amount of this contract. You've just got to rely on the person with the right equipment to be able to do it for you, so I hope you'll do that. I have to ask about the ESCNJ. So I know Superintendent, you're new in your role as the board's rep there, but I want every board member to be on notice and aware of the Comptroller's Report that I mentioned in my remarks at your last meeting. It is from the New Jersey Office of the State Comptroller. It's titled Audit Clients and Educational Services Commission of New Jersey and Mass sixty-nine million dollar surplus without a plan for how to use it. And, you know, that's just the title of the document. I understand that it's kind of a good problem to have a lot of money, but, you know, still a good point that is made by the OSC, and there's a lot of other deficiencies they identified that are serious cause for concern. For instance, ESCNJ properly awarded seven contracts with combined value of fourteen point six million without seeking competition. They also failed to consider alternative health insurance providers, and OSC found that they could potentially save the total of about a million dollars over three years by using the school employees' health benefits program. ESCNJ paid three hundred forty-three thousand more in medical claims than what was actually billed for the fiscal year ended in twenty twenty-three. And additionally, public entities are required to submit procurements valued at two point five million or more for the OSC to review in order to ensure compliance with procurement laws and guard against cronyism, corruption, and waste. ESCNJ never submitted contracts despite receiving multiple notices from OSC directly ESCNJ to do so. And some other things that trouble me in this are that the ESCNJ hired seven professional services firms and consultants paying a total of fourteen point six million without using a competitive procurement process or obtaining the documentation required by the school public pub school contracts law. And deeper than that, OSC found that that reduced the likelihood that ESCNJ secured that skill for taxpayers. One of the seven vendors was a lobbying firm, paid forty-two thousand dollars, and I'll wrap up since my time's up, but could you respond to any of this and share what you know about the situation with this audit?
I don't have a comment on this topic.
Could we hear from the Superintendent?
I don't have a comment either.
Okay, I sincerely encourage the board to look into this, and please, please do. I sincerely encourage the board to look into this, and please, please do familiarize yourself with the audit.
Thank you. Ms. Maria Lora, is there anyone else signed up?
Yes, Mr. Adorno, we have Linda Stork also signed up to show a public comment tonight. Does not look like Ms. Stork is present tonight.
Thank you.
That is everyone who signed up for tonight's board meeting.
Thank you. Uh, for my comment, I'm going to piggyback a lot on what Dr. Johnson said. Um, October, especially the, the early part of the school year is filled with a lot of , uh, celebrations, recognitions, events throughout the city and the school district. Um, we're wrapping up Hispanic Heritage Month, and this year, there are several flag raising in the county hosted here in the city, um, such as the Colombian and Mexican flag raising, as well as the first-time-ever, uh, flags like the Guatemalan flag, and on the twenty-fifth, uh, for the first time, the Nicaraguan flag is going to go up. Um, so I encourage you guys, if you're in town, uh, to stop by the county and get the event started at five P.M., to see the, the Nicaraguan flag go up. Um, as mentioned earlier, October is National Principals Month. I would like to recognize the hard work of our principals. Uh, the first marketing period is filled with a ton of activities, reporting, adjusting for parents, students, and staff. Uh, so thank you for keeping our district moving and keeping, uh, as much of that angst and anxiety for our first-time students and parents down as, as to a member. Uh, on October fifth was World Teachers' Day, so if you have not had a chance to, please show love and appreciation to the teachers in your life. Um, you can all either track our, our, our education back to a teacher that inspired us to be where we're at, so, you know, it's always good to remind them of what, and, and they, how they influenced you. Uh, October sixth, we celebrated National Coaches' Day, and I'm forever grateful for all the coaches that work with the youth in New Brunswick, uh, and I promise you that influence matters. Um, I would also like to acknowledge and recognize one of the unsung heroes in public schools. National IT Professional Day was celebrated September nineteenth, and National Custodian Day was celebrated October second. So thank you for the work that you do that sometimes often goes unnoticed, but do not get me wrong, that work is instrumental to the district's daily operations. So thank you for your hard work, um, and I look forward to the rest of the school year with you. I can just remind you. Uh, we're moved to item number fourteen, the Consent Agenda. Do you have a motion? Oh, Madam Secretary, we'll call.
Ms. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood?
Yes.
Mrs. Solis?
Yes.
Mr. Spencer?
Yes.
Ms. Varela?
Yes.
Mr. Adorno?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Item fifteen, Finance Committee Report, Ms. Varela.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. The Finance Committee met for the month of October. We reviewed the October fifteenth Finance Report. Can I please have a motion to accept the Finance Report?
So move second.
Madam President, Madam Secretary, we'll call.
Ms. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez?
Yes, extension, page twenty-three.
Noted. Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood?
Yes.
Mrs. Solis?
Yes.
Mr. Spencer?
Yes.
Ms. Varela?
Yes.
Mr. Adorno?
Yes, I've stayed on pages six and seventeen.
Noted. Motion approved.
Thank you. Resolution for closed session, whereas the Open Public Meeting Act NJSA SA ten, uh, uh, ten point four-six provides that certain matters of public, of a public body may be discussed in closed session, and whereas the Board of Education intends to discuss the matter as follows: one, personnel matters; two, matters of a time, a turning time privilege. Now therefore be resolved that the affirm, the aforementioned subjects shall be discussed in closed session by this Board of Education and administrative staff, and the minutes of said closed session discussion will be made available to the public when the reasons for the nondisclosure in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act no longer exist. May I have a motion to go into closed session? We'll call Madam Secretary.
Ms. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood?
Yes.
Mrs. Solis?
Yes.
Mr. Spencer?
Yes.
Ms. Varela?
Yes.
Mr. Adorno?
Yes, we are non-closed session.